And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and the business me. This is the most people we've had since marijuana or ambulances, you know? So I'm glad we're not talking about either tonight. But Mr. Krupp is now going to do our rule call.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. And of course, joining us this evening, Mr. Stephen Madcorp from the county council's office. And then immediately to my left and your right is Mary Rathke, our clerk of the board. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? There is no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We almost were all there. It's a habit to get into. I swear there's no comma there, but we'll keep practicing on it. The first thing as we always try to do is do citizens' communication. In this particular situation, we have our county clerk here to give us a report on the election. Sherry Hall.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow. Good evening, Commissioners. Did you all sleep well election night?
Is your button on there?
Yes, there's no button.
Oh.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better, though, yeah.
Okay, well, from the election night ballots that came in, we posted our final unofficial for that this morning at about seven something, I think. And we just posted a new one just before five tonight because today we picked up another 2,500-plus ballots at the Multnomah County/Washington County/Clackamas County ballot exchange. And we will be getting a few more from other counties. We have five days to get those to each other. And you have the latest results that's on our county-only piece, which has the percentages And I'm going to just let you ask questions or comments if you want, and you can tell me what information you need. I have quite a bit here.
The question I have to ask, because I think a lot of people went to your website.
Yes.
And unfortunately, the undervotes were counted and the percentage, not the votes, obviously the votes were correct, but the undervotes were counted as well. When will that be changed or corrected?
Well, the company is on it. It's a piece of the software. And this system has been out for a year, and this was the first time this had been brought to their attention.
Really?
And, yes.
Nobody else has complained about this, huh?
No. What they did is counted the undervotes and overvotes and included those as votes cast in the percentages, and they are not votes cast.
No.
And Ada County, Idaho, which is Boise, same system. I got a call from him last night, and same problem. And they better get on it. But it's really interesting because there's many other counties in Oregon who bought a different tally system that did the same thing. Multnomah County has that one, and all they put on their results page were numbers, no percentages. But Washington County and Lynn County, they were both calculated the same as ours. Harney County and Josephine County has that same system that they have, but their calculation did not include overvotes and undervotes.
So...
So it will be fixed. But you also saw that we put together our own page for county races, which is correct. And I gave each of you one. You should have it sitting there.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, so that shows the percentages as being correct.
Okay. Commissioner Savis.
I got a lot of questions about the same thing, concerned, so I don't think that that had any value to anyone having that particular number. I know that's a software glitch, but the comments were, it had not much in the way of value as far as determining, especially the people who were trying to seek 51% or 50% plus one.
50% plus one, right.
Yeah. So people had a lot of calculators out that night.
But the Oregonian took our results and did the math and put their results out correctly without the under and overvotes.
Right.
And there's some others who could just do the math in their head, but there's some who didn't know how. But that's also why we put a piece on our official tally results to explain what happened.
I saw the explanation off the right, even that night.
Right.
Off the right column, and explained that, but, you know, I think for most people, they didn't understand what or why, so...
It's true. But the company has the issue, and they will be fixing it.
Commissioner Bernard.
I think it wasn't until somebody opened up Oregon Live and then they left, and I didn't know where they'd seen it. And I tried to figure it out. Congratulations, Martha. I thought you were in a runoff, and it was great to see you had won, so congratulations.
I won too, didn't I? Oh, just checking.
The assessor and Martha's position got 50% plus one.
Yep.
But the others are in a runoff. Yay!
Lucky woman.
Yeah.
All right. Well, any further questions?
And we will be posting updates maybe every couple of days between now and June 6, which is the day we certify.
Okay.
And you saw the Damascus one.
We did.
That was about two to one.
There are ramifications of that, which we'll be discussing in the coming weeks.
Yep. And the Oregon City measure may go to a runoff, which is done automatically by us if it's less than two-tenths of 1%.
What measure was that again?
Annexation? Was it annexation?
I don't remember what it was. Well, it's all right. You know, it's okay.
I'm looking here.
I asked, and she's just determined to do it.
Well, we got volunteers here. We're going to get going.
Right.
Tell us later.
I think it's Wesley Lynn Park.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, to allow easement on public road.
Oh.
It's Measure 3-479.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. We appreciate that. All right, we have some citizens who want to testify. I would like to welcome Jose Hernandez and Mac Woods. Jose, como esta? Bien, eh?
Well, good evening, and congratulations for continuing to be in here at least until November.
Yeah.
I am here once again to discuss the issue that I have been discussing with you now, the tax reform for disabled veterans. And while there were some, back in October, there was, rather, earlier, there were some issues that possibly you guys wanted me to be a representative in, at the state legislature, but they did not include it in this year's last meeting. I believe, and what I am here to do is to suggest that perhaps a committee be formed from your office such that that committee can start talking to other counties and/or districts regarding this issue so that they can combine the whole state, then address the issues in the legislature that's coming up. And that's what I'm here to do, just because I think that it is time that the state repasses or restores that act.
You know, for the audience, they should know that this law was passed in the '50s that would allow somebody who is 40% disabled, a veteran, to be able to be exempt from up to $20,000 worth of value. Well, in the '50s, that was a good home, but now it's nothing. And so these vets get, you know, their taxes off of a simple $20,000. That doesn't mean much anymore in today's real estate market. So we have promised, Mac and you, Jose, that we would try to encourage the state to change that law and get a higher value so these vets don't, 40% disabled is a heck of a lot, and try to get it so it's back to where it's equitable and has parity with the current market.
I had not, I had not heard or seen anything that suggested that the Clackamas had addressed the issue with the state.
We, what we did, we have lobbyists, and we talked with key legislators down there about the short session, but that short session was a mile a minute and very focused. They didn't want to enter into it. So what we told them was, we'll be back, and that means come November, we'll be working on that with the legislature, get a sponsor, and then, yes, we will expect you to testify during that time. Commissioner Bernard.
You see, I'm 100% disabled.
I know you are.
I also wanted to note that AOC, at the Association of Oregon Counties, we brought it up at veterans' meetings and at the legislative and board level, and they intend to be working on it, too.
Well, I thank you.
We'll be on it. And we'll get a guy named Mac Woods maybe involved. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow. I am Mac Woods, I live in Clackamas County. I am a veteran. I only put in a little over 20 years' continuous active duty. However, first of all, I want to compliment the first speaker today, Sherry Hall. What a great job she has done. As good as she is, she has to deal with a lot of difficulties that no one else could even handle, so my hat's off to her for the good, well, good job she's done. As well as also, I want to compliment the folks that work right here that does the video, the movies. I started coming to these meetings back when someone else was chair, Mr. Ludlow, as you know. And by the good job that the folks that work right here that does the videos and CDs, they do a great job. They hear all the comments, each and every one of you and all other public speakers speak. And even though some of the ones that said certain things, their memory don't remember what they said, we got it on video. It's, we're going to have fun with it because there's some items that's going to be coming up that is going to be fun and interesting. Back on the veterans, as Jose has mentioned before, which the bill that was signed into law for each and every county of the 36 counties in Oregon is exactly the same, right over here, Tax Assessor's Office, and the same rules on every county in the state. When it started in 1955, a house, can I borrow this, Jose, please? Like Jose's house here, a three-bedroom, one or two bath, was selling in 1955 for between $7,000 and $8,000. And the amount that the veterans, that they used in that year, in 1955, 60 years ago, was any place that a veteran rated 40% or more disabled, like Jose, got an exemption of $10,000. Mr. Ludlow, I can give you some additional information to help you.
We're brokers, we know, don't we, Mac?
But it wasn't $20,000. It's $20,000 off today. $20,000 off of the tax assessed value. The example they're using right here on Jose's place today that he pays taxes on is 200, almost $220,000. He, even with the $20,000 exemption off, he's still paying taxes on over $200,000. Therefore, it needs to be changed to adjust to what it was when it started, and a veteran rated 40% or more disabled back in those days was not paying $1. It needs to get back to that, and with the help of the right people, we should be able to do it. And the amount, the number of service-connected veterans in the whole state of Oregon is a drop in the bucket compared of all the other taxpayers, and they spend more money on tri-med taxes alone than all the veterans together get exempt from. That needs to get real and get back to help the veterans. If they want to tell what they're doing for the veterans, let's speak up and do something for the veterans. Hats off to you, Jose. And for the people that does the video and Martha, some others say different things, but we look into the ones that really want to do something for the veterans, not just talk. Thank you.
Thank you, both you veterans for coming forward.
Thank you. We're glad to serve. Huh, Jose? Yeah, we come back alive.
You are.
A lot of them did. There's a lot of veterans missing. There's no reason there's so many disabled homeless veterans. They can't pay their taxes.
Yeah. The last speaker we have is Mr. Les Poole.
Good evening, Les Poole, Gladstone. I have talked with a couple of our legislators and let them know that the county has been a good advocate for what Mac's talking about. And with a big session coming, I know that we'll get some action on it, hopefully. A comment about the election in terms of an issue that I, for lack of a better description, I've been talking about and bringing up over and over, and that's the roads. And it was good to see that the advisory vote passed because now the citizens have said, okay, put something together we can live with, let's get this addressed because the problem's getting worse and worse. And so I was pleased to see that outcome. And I've asked before, and I certainly don't expect an answer this evening, but I'm curious as to, you know, how much, how much was in the budget from discretionary, I'll call it discretionary spending for roads last year versus this year? How is that going to work? Where's our road budget going to be? And the reason I'm asking that's real simple. The more money you squeak out of this budget for roads, the less you ask for in November, and the bigger the message is to the citizens that you're doing everything you can, like you did last year. So again, I'm looking forward to that issue, and hopefully we can have a good outcome. The other subject on my mind is, of course, a follow-up. I was here last week. Obviously, most of the people here don't know what's going on, but there's been some things said about, not so much about me, but about the history of light rail and the tree ordinance and library, et cetera. And these claims were made by a candidate who's here now, Mr. Bernard. And I asked him to bring some clarification, some proof of his claims. And if he couldn't, I downright ask him for an apology tonight, and hopefully he's got something to say about that. I've got a minute left, and I'd like to hear something. Thank you.
Well, it's certainly up to anybody up here to comment as they will, but I don't know that he chooses to comment right now. We have a volunteer appreciation night, and we're probably going to start that right after you're done, Les.
All right. All right. I appreciate not getting an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Ladies and gentlemen, the definition of a volunteer, the noun, is someone who freely contributes time, effort, and talent to meet a need or further a mission without compensation. It is no secret that our volunteers save this county millions of dollars every year because if they don't do this work, then we'll probably have to hire somebody to do it. So we have great appreciation for that and your continued service. This is a portion of the volunteers that are here tonight, and for that, you get cake and punch here pretty soon. This evening, we will honor you, the volunteers of Clackamas County. Citizen involvement is crucial in helping to guide this commission on the issues that impact your lives and your communities. We would not be successful without your support and input. You each have given your time, talents, and expertise to Clackamas County, and we sincerely appreciate all of you. You truly make a difference. And it's Helen Keller that said, alone, we can do little; together, we can do so much. And with that, we're going to have a fantastic photo op, but I would ask you to stay where you're at.
Tracy's going to come up first.
Tracy's coming up here. We're going to come down there because she's going to have a better overhead shot so we can get all of your faces. Now, remember, if you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you. So be sure to, after she says her piece here, sorry, Tracy.
Oh, no, that's okay. We actually did our cable communication staff, and good evening, Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. We made a very short video that we wanted to play before we had our photo.
Absolutely.
Tracy, can you talk? Tracy, can you talk a little bit because this is going to take a while? Oh, yes. So one of the things that we wanted to share from Public and Government Affairs, I'm Tracy Moreland. We are here to recognize over 1,700 county volunteers, and we found database and lists from all different county departments. And after we play the video, then we'll quickly ask the folks to stand according to department, if that's all right, and then we'll adjourn to our reception so you could finish your business meeting.
Here in Clackamas County, we provide an array of services to our residents, and we couldn't do all that we do without our county volunteers. Volunteers help us strengthen our community by increasing and fostering opportunities for individuals and families to be self-reliant, live healthier, and be more socially connected. They give back to their neighbors and community by supporting programs for children, youth, and the elderly. They help dogs find a new home in the area. They are enhancing public safety and are involved in solving the issues our county faces by participating on advisory boards and commissions and volunteering with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. They are ensuring our county parks and natural areas remain clean and beautiful for the next generation. Thank you to all our volunteers for making Clackamas County an even better place to live, work, and play. And if interested in more ways you can make an impact, go to clackamas.us/volunteers.
Yeah, at the very end.
Really?
Yeah.
I just did a quick calculation.
She was not underwater. Sorry.
Oops.
Déjà vu all over again. I just did a calculation. At 1,700 volunteers, if they each gave eight hours per month, each month, that would save Clackamas County $1.3 million.
Amazing.
So that's incredible. And like I say, it's better that they give that time than we take it out of your taxes in order to spend. So again, fantastic volunteers here in this room, let alone the other 1,600 that are missing. Is there anything else?
Well, yeah, if we could just, I'll quickly list some...
Let's try the departments, yeah.
Yeah, list some departments of the folks who are here. If you could just stand, as I call the department that you're associated with, of the folks from Volunteer Connection, including social services volunteers and H3S volunteers. Thank you so much. The folks who volunteer with our public safety departments, including the district attorney, juvenile, disaster management, and 911, and the sheriff's office, search and rescue folks, yes.
With those colors, we can see you, that's for sure, huh?
And I want to mention, too, that Captain Rhodes is here on behalf of the sheriff. Thank you, Captain Rhodes, for helping us support our volunteers in the public safety area. And if you support county parks, libraries, water environment services, or resolution services, or if you serve on an advisory board or commission, which relates to any county department, please stand. Advisory boards and commissions, yes. And I think there might be some folks here from our other citizen involvement groups, CCI or CPOs, hamlets and villages, and other volunteers that might be here tonight, if you would stand.
Should we have volunteers?
Yes, thank you. So how about if we give everybody a round of applause? And we're, staff's going to help escort our volunteers to our reception. If you want to have a photo, though, we could do that, really.
I think it'd be great. We talked about, Mary and I did, about the commission going down there and then you shooting everybody so we get a great shot, rather than have everybody come up because there's not enough room up there.
So everyone stand who's a volunteer.
To the center.
Well, I don't know about that.
I don't know. That blocks a lot of people.
Crazy? I would think they should sit because some people are taller, stand in front of other people.
Okay.
So everybody have a seat. We can see your faces better than that.
Everyone, yes.
Don't blink.
Can you get everyone? I got everyone.
Anybody blink?
And one more. Thank you very much.
Now, you're going to be escorted because you don't want to watch the rest. We're going to be in very short time, the rest of it. You'll be escorted down on one floor, and you'll have all the sweet stuff, and we'll be up there for long. If you want to hang around and watch the rest of it, you're welcome to do that, so. It's a big shark. Yeah. Consent?
Ooh, I got to get out of this thing.
For the camera crew, we're going to reassess for a couple minutes. All right, we're back in order here. We've had a great volunteer appreciation. They're now down tasting sweet things as we go through the rest of our very short agenda. It's now time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval to apply for a grant from the Oregon Health Authority for rental assistance for veterans, approval of a renewal agreement with Care Oregon for the Behavioral Health Clinic integration to the EPIC electronic health record system, and approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the wraparound care coordinator consulting services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval to purchase a new Wirtgrin 120 CFI asphalt milling machine from Modern Machinery for the Transportation Maintenance Division, and approval of previous business meeting minutes. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, want to remove any of those items? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion?
Well...
Go ahead.
Is this the machine that the folks came to us and talked about?
Yes, it certainly is. And there has been subsequent dialogue with the individuals who came to talk with you. One of the main concerns that was raised was the priority of equipment purchasing. And when folks had a chance to meet, what we learned from the employees was an interest in the replacement of the grade-all. And there was a sentiment on the part of some individuals that that had a higher priority. What the management and the road department were able to do was to help folks appreciate that, in fact, the grade-all is still in the plans for purchasing. It's just they couldn't deal with all of the vendor-related issues during the course of the...
the vendor-related issues during the course of this current budget year. So, they're moving forward with that. And I think folks felt satisfied that the explanation met their needs for their priorities for some of the work that needs to be done, so.
The only other comment, you know, some of this very expensive equipment, it'd be great to see maybe how often it's used, a maintenance schedule, or how many, you know, they're by hours. How many hours it is used annually might not be a bad thing to have.
We can provide that, so.
I don't need it tonight. Well, could you run out and get that?
Yeah. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I guess on that point, it's utilization of equipment, you know, and where are we with that? And where do we actually plan to be? And can something like that be either borrowed or hired from another jurisdiction like Portland or whatnot that we could actually save some money and actually put that towards asphalt? So, yeah, same concerns.
Alright, this is motion on floor in a second. Are we ready for the vote?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. And now, I'm so sorry that most everybody's departed for one of the most important things, and that is the county administrator update.
Yes, and I'm happy to share some good news with you. Of course, in addition to the many volunteers that we saw here in the audience, I'm also happy to say that our own employees do quite a bit of volunteering as well. And, you know, last week you had a presentation on Mental Health Awareness Month. And I wanted to let you know that our employees with the Health, Housing, and Human Services staff participated in the annual National Alliance for Mental Health Fundraiser Walk in Portland. It was held this past Sunday. And the department raised three thousand dollars. That's the largest total they've been able to raise so far as they're participating in this particular annual event. So, many thanks to our staff for that and for the efforts they give in their own volunteer efforts here. Then, in the coming weeks, for the Memorial Day holiday weekend, I wanted to let you know that the sheriff's office will be participating in the nationwide Click It or Ticket campaign. And this will run until May twenty ninth. Deputies will join other law enforcement agencies to raise awareness about seatbelt use and the goal of saving lives. And I wanted to thank our deputies in the sheriff's office for keeping us buckled up for safety. And then finally, another feather in our cap for our Public and Governmental Affairs team, our YouTube channel has hit a major milestone. We have surpassed one hundred thousand total video views on our YouTube channel. Now, about seventy-four thousand of those views occurred just over the course of this past year. And that means that the investment we've made in that effort is really seeing a return. And in fact, it's worth mentioning that Clackamas County, its YouTube channel has the most subscribers of any county YouTube channel in the state of Oregon. Then, in addition to those one hundred thousand views, we also had some eighty thousand views of our videos on Facebook since last June, over the course of the past year. So, kudos to our Public and Governmental Affairs staff and our award-winning Cable Division that have really worked hard to develop strategies that reach out and keep our citizens and residents advised and informed.
Thank you. And now it's time for commissioner communication. We'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Well, being that our volunteers have kind of gone downstairs for the snacks and the goodies, I thought it'd be, I'll just point out a number of the committees out there and volunteers, just to touch on a few. That, I know we mentioned some of those, but we have a lot of volunteers that do Meals on Wheels. And some of those, some of those folks pay for their own gas. Actually, a lot of them pay for their own gas. Surgeon Rescue who pay for their own gas, gear, rigs, a whole bunch of stuff. And they need, actually they need some help. That's been a long, five years we've been trying to find a way to help them. Our budget committees, all of our budget committees, for all the different districts we have. The Parks Board, both the district and the county Parks Board, wastewater boards, we have three of them, watershed, service water watersheds, library committees, the Fair Board, and of course, all the people that are not on the Fair Board but participate in running the fair. When we have our fair, there's hundreds of folks that actually help there. CPOs, hamlets, villages, dog services, people, Affordable Housing Board, Volunteer Connection, that was mentioned, social service programs, number of them, we have a lot of volunteers, the sheriff's office, that was mentioned, disaster management, C-Com, resolution services, Resource Conservation Group, transportation committees, lots of volunteers there. NAMI has a lot of volunteers, veterans, we have a lot of volunteers. And that's, you know, I couldn't write them all down, but I just think that probably one of the last five years of being a commissioner, I think I've been most touched by how much volunteers we have and what they do for us to make our community in County a richer county. And we are a great community because of them and because of the efforts we do. So, I think we should always look to honor them, respect them, and treat them as well as we can. And even when we disagree, we got to find a way to respect them. And so that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, colleagues, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Savis said about our volunteers. And in particular, I'm looking forward to working with our Veterans Advisory Committee. We were able to do a concurrent covenant pledge with the Community College. And thank you colleagues, all of you attended, all of you are supportive of this initiative. I'm really pleased to see an agenda, the application for a grant from the Oregon Health Authority for rental assistance for veterans, housing for veterans is one of our top priorities in this county. And I want to thank our two veterans who came tonight, who are both Navy guys. And I don't know, I hear the Navy guys sometimes don't like the Marine guys. I'm just not so sure about that. I've heard that. Heard that there's a little bit of rub occasionally between those two branches of the service. And I particularly, I do want to do a shout out to my dear friend Cameron Smith, who is a Marine and is head of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. He's been a great help. He comes to every single one of our meetings for veterans at the Association of Oregon Counties. He never misses one. He gives us updates. And I want to assure the folks that spoke tonight that this notion of getting a tax break and modernizing that piece is on everybody's radar screen. And I appreciate folks bringing that forward to us. I had a recent call with our National Community and Economic, our NACO National Community and Economic Development Steering Committee. We are setting our agenda for July in Long Beach. In particular, they're looking at how to help counties export their products. And in that way, all of us attended, I believe, the Clackamas Export and Global Trade Summit, actually, this past week as well, where we bring together our businesses to help them move up the ladder if they want to export their goods and services nationally and internationally. It was about culture and how we understand other cultures so they will do business with us. And it was one of the best talks I've ever heard. This woman, the woman was fantastic. The other thing, we had a meeting with our Internal Audit Oversight Committee, and that was with Mr. Krupp and Mr. Madcor. And we went through Justice Court this time. It was an excellent idea. Thank you Commissioner Savis and colleagues for pulling that committee forward. It really is going to help us catch anything that we can change to make it a better practice. You know, it's going to be essential that this is going to be a great way to make sure that if any, if any issues emerging, we catch it sooner than later. And we implement it with best practices, as I said. I got to sit in on Commissioner Smith's committee today. I just went down and listened at the Housing Advisory Board. And tomorrow I'm heading to Siam for the AOC, Oregon Association of Counties Housing Policy Committee. So, we're both going to continue to team on that. Lastly, Arts and Culture in Clackamas County. I'll go fast. The Clackamas Community College 2016 Outdoor Sculpture Invitational Celebration. This is Saturday, May twenty first, from eleven AM to four PM on the Clackamas Community College campus in Oregon City. It's going to go through June third. It's going to include the works of sixteen regional artists, and it's in celebration of the college's fiftieth anniversary. Villa Catalana Cellars, Open Nursery and Garden, Lunch Desserts, Garden Glass, and Garden Sculptures by Ben Dye. Once, one time a year when you can purchase plants at the Tropical Plant Conservatory, and of course, taste some wine. Saturday and Sunday, May twenty first and twenty second, eleven to four PM at Villa Catalina Cellars in Oregon City. Arts Alliance website for any other information is clackamasartsalliance.org.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, first I want to thank voters for supporting the radio replacement bond measure. I mean, very strong support. Difficult to communicate, proud that people stepped up. Real big public safety issue. Also want to congratulate the Letting Library for passing of the bond measure. Very proud of that. The Letting Library was donated, the property was donated by the Scott family many, many years ago. And the library hasn't changed since I was in grade school.
That long ago?
Yeah, that long ago. Also, you know, sad, but Damascus won't be here with us anymore. I'm going to make sure I save the cup that has their name on it. And hopefully, folks will get together again and talk about could there be a city, maybe a smaller city. There was so much potential. I remember going to those early meetings in two thousand and three. There was so much potential. It's, it's, it's too bad it's gone. But I'd say the county looks forward to addressing the marijuana issue out in that community. And we'll be doing that as soon as we possibly can. Also, just want to mention something about the election. I had an opportunity to talk to John, and we are going to do our best to keep politics out of the office. And because we need, we have a lot of work to do. We have a budget to do. We have Damascus to deal with. And we're going to just do our best to keep politics out of the office. And Martha, I want to congratulate you on the covenant. I think it'd be great to every once in a while have those items on our agenda, maybe so we remember what we promised to do, and focus on maybe ticking off one and the other. And I know our Veterans Committee is going to be doing that, so.
They're actually doing their own work plan covenant that will help us actually get things done.
And the outdoor culture thing, outdoor sculpture thing, I went to that years and years ago when they had it. And then Milwaukee, when I was the downtown president, we borrowed those sculptures and put them all around Milwaukee. And boy, did that start the conversation on the riverfront. But I, there was one particular sculpture, I'd love to have, know where that is, because I'd love to have it. And I'm going to look. Of course, I probably couldn't afford it, but I'm going to certainly go take a look and see if it's there. And then tonight, we're going to talk about our dog at the shelter.
Oh, my gosh.
Who writes this stuff, by the way? Oh. I'll say it. So, this is Walter.
Walter.
We call him Walt.
Walt.
He's teeny, tiny, sleek, and handsome fellow. He might be a little reluctant with new friends at first. He has cuddle bug personality, whatever that is.
I know exactly.
That's why I said, who writes this stuff? An adult-only home would be best for him. Give Walter time to warm up, and he will fit right into your lap and into your heart. Please go and visit Walter today. For more information about Walter and other adorable, adoptable dogs. Please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Jim, don't tell my daughter about that dog.
Cuddle bug, yeah.
Yeah, did, okay, great.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you. Martha, I want to congratulate you on your win. You avoided runoff in November. And that's what we all hope for.
Yeah.
And you can spend time with your family and visit your grandkids. And I think that's an okay thing to do, actually. Well, I just want to talk about the election and how, for me, it was very personal. I just want to give a heartfelt thank you to the voters, constituents, donors, and my support network of friends, family, and mentors. You know who you are. You all made this election cycle possible. Your encouragement kept me going, and I am grateful. A shout out to my two opponents, Bill King and Ken Humberson, who kept the debate civil and focused on the issues. I'm honored to run in November to the finish line. The best outcome in politics, as they say, is to live for another day, and I certainly get to do that. This was my first election cycle without my biggest fan, my mother. There were times during this election when my heart broke in half, and I wanted to crawl in a hole. And at times, it was difficult for me to continue. Up until she died in October, she was still asking me about my activities at the county, and if I would be successful and almost demanding so. You see, although I grew up on a secluded farm in South County, she always encouraged me to think beyond myself into world events. My first remembrance of her political education, so to speak, was watching JFK's funeral at age six. That was followed by an unending, what seemed to be an unending civil rights movement, where she explained to me why people were black because I'd never seen one before. And you know, that was an okay thing. The death of Bobby Kennedy, Martin Luther King, the Vietnam War to Watergate. I had a front row seat because mom made these events personal and spurred my critical thinking to the point of frustration. Even now, my mind is a movie reel reclaiming the moments of where and when. She asked me certain questions pretending she didn't know the answers I was supposed to supply her. Mom taught me to work, to serve people, and be grateful for what you have. Thank you, Gene Rice, for my passion, unending love, and energy to do what the universe demands of me. I'm having a ball. Thank you.
Well, how do you top that, for goodness sakes? Just a brief synopsis of this last week. Had a great Fair Board meeting, met with the Fair Board. They are active and viable and do a great job in the fair. I want to do a shout out to Ms. Wilfridson, the audience. Been a lot of time since you've been here. Welcome. We did the Veterans Covenant signing, which was mentioned. Went to a Clackamas Export and Global Trade Summit, which was outstanding. And they had a super speaker there, a lady from Switzerland, Valerie, yeah. But she was outstanding. Met with Sheriff Roberts, and I gave an intro to the Second Annual Citizens Academy. Some opening remarks to them. We're glad they're volunteering for that. We, this next week, President Hughes of Metro has invited ten mayors, the county chairs from Washington and Multnomah and Clackamas, although Washington and Clackamas are going, Multnomah is not, to talk about the urban growth boundaries and how that would go this next round, and what kind of lands may be let in, and listened to the mayors, as well as LCDC, Thousand Friends, and the home builder. And want to announce that the Clackamas Community College is having their fiftieth birthday party this Saturday. You can look up at their site to see the full activities. I'll be making some remarks there. And one of my favorite places in Clackamas County is Promontory Park. It's in North Fork Reservoir on the Clackamas. And they've been closed for a long time because PGE was building a huge fish ladder that sits in the middle of the lake and, I want to say encourages fish to come near so they can suck them out and put them down where they should be. But finally, the Promontory Park is reopening. You'll recall, if you've ever been there, that they actually rent little boats that, and canoes and stuff. So, it's a great place. If you have an opportunity to go up there on Saturday, it will be there. This next week, we'll be having a Safe Place Steering Committee meeting. We have, I have three wastewater meetings. And then we have the Community Action Awards. And I presented those awards this last year. I'll tell you, it was fantastic. You talk about the volunteers here, and that's for sure. But they recognize outstanding volunteers from a variety of disciplines. And what a great job they do. And it's special to see somebody get something as simple as a paper pla, or a paper award, because they do frame them for them and give them to them. And those go up on people's walls because they don't run in high circles. These people are down helping the people who really need help in Clackamas County. And that is all volunteers. So, I'm very impressed with them. Looking forward to giving those presentations Wednesday night. I too want to say thank you to all the people that voted for me. Jim Bernard and I are going to have a great campaign. Issues oriented, I might add, not personality-oriented. But we look forward to that. And I certainly had a nice talk with Jim that night. He called me after the election. So, again, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to hurry down and see how much cake we see eaten. And we invite everybody in this room, left in this room, to come down with us. But there being no further business before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, this day, this meeting is adjourned.